Okay, we're on the air. This is the Cadillac City Council meeting for November 19th, 2012. It's just after 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order at this time and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Chris, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Melama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Barnett?
Here. Everyone's here and accounted for. Approval of the agenda? Could we have a motion to approve our agenda tonight, or are there any changes, Mr. Petya?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there support?
Support.
There's support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. We have an agenda. Public comments, they're limited to three minutes if at all possible, and a public comment is open at this time. We do have one at the end of the meeting, and also we have some public hearings. If you are part of the public hearings, you may wish to just speak during those public hearings. It's up to you. Public comments open? Pilots are back.
Good evening. I'm David Gershak with First Housing Corporation. I wanted to know if it was appropriate, I would like to bring up the subject. I understand that they're not going to be hearing the pilot this evening, but they're going to be discussing the ordinance. So is it appropriate to discuss it now, or if I could have an opportunity to speak later on when it is discussed?
Okay. Give me just a second. Marcus, your thoughts on, we did change the agenda a little bit, and they have come as well, which is nice. Any thoughts on the timing of his statements?
I think it'd be best to save it for the item on the agenda, but we, council can hear everything all at once.
Okay. Is that all right for you?
That's fine. Thank you very much.
All right. We'll get to you as soon as we can. Thank you. Public comments are still open, and anyone else wishing to speak during the public comment should do so at this time. Hearing and seeing no one move forward, we're going to close public comments, move to the consent agenda, and could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Okay. And any discussion?
I wasn't sure. I know we had a member in the audience dealing with the C item with Cabrefay. I don't know if there was a hope to have a chance to talk during this time or not.
Okay. It's basically what Art's referring to is C, which is a request from the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau for-
You need to pull it out of the consent agenda then.
Okay, hang on. I'm just going to explain what it is, and-
Can you talk on it, you think?
Pardon me? Well, that is the rule, but it's a request from the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau for Downtown Banners to honor the 75th anniversary of Cabrefay Ski Resort. They both are standing up, Pete Meyer and Joy Van Dri. Would you mind if they just give us some of their thoughts, and I don't know that it's going to be an item of contention.
How do I do this?
She can amend her motion.
Okay. Would you mind just having a seat in the front row? We're going to get to you. Can we put them right before the first public hearing, which is after a proclamation?
So are we going to pull out item C?
Yes. It sounds like we would need to amend your motion to approve the agenda to include C, and if we could put them right under proclamations, which we haven't on tonight, that would be great. We'll see if I don't miss it.
Yeah, I apologize on that. I just, I thought with present tonight and such a big event, it'd be nice to have a little discussion about that.
Sure. Okay, so the consent agenda that I would like to move to approve includes item A and B with item C removed.
And we're going to put that right under proclamations?
And put that under proclamations.
Awesome.
Support.
And there's support. Any discussion? I'll just note, the council minutes were a part of the agenda that we're passing here under the consent agenda, and it's from a special meeting from November 5th, and also our city council slash public safety review team minutes from a work session held November 5th. Those are the two items on the consent portion. Cabrefay will be moved to the, right below proclamations. Anyone with any problem with that?
It's not correct.
You're talking about the special meeting?
Yeah.
I wondered that too, and I saw that a-
Well, November 5th should not be the word "special."
Right.
Okay.
It's a regular meeting. The other one was the special.
Right.
I see.
All our meetings are special, is what the-
Okay, so now I amended to include the amended verbiage in item A.
Okay.
Support.
I think, do we have everything covered? I'm not sure they have Cabrefay Ski Resort mentioned right, but we can talk about your new name, right? Cabrefay Peaks?
This is totally demonstrating how I test the village.
We're going to leave that one, and let Pete explain the new name. Because actually, it was Cabrefay Ski Resort for many of those 75 years. Any way of motion and support? Any other discussion? Hearing none. We're finally coming to you, Chris, for a vote, please.
Councilmember Spolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Apologize for the delay. There are no proclamations, so we'll bump down to what is, what was C, which is a request from the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau for Downtown Banners to honor the 75th anniversary of the Cabrefay Ski Resort slash Peaks. And maybe there's more. Who would like to talk about that item as we are about, ready to approve? Yes, you now can come up. We didn't want to have you stand up there uncomfortably.
Right.
Rather have you sit uncomfortably.
Okay. Joy Van Dri from the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau, Executive Director. I reside at 10778 South 33 Mile Road in Cadillac. Pete, name and role.
Pete Meyer from Cabrefay Peaks Ski Resort. I reside at 8269 Crestview Drive.
Hi, Pete, and hi, Joy. Thanks for coming. Would you mind telling us what's going on with the, not only the banner, which I assume we're going to approve, but the exciting anniversary that's coming around the corner for historic ski lodge and resort?
Well, in conjunction to the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau's Winter Pure Michigan Partnership, we thought, why not do a super rally around Cabrefay? Cabrefay has been in existence now for 75 years. They're the oldest ski resort in the Midwest, and one of the oldest in the nation, and that's pretty substantial, I think, and I'm trying to really bring that to light for the area. They've been providing a huge economic boost in our community for that many years. Was it 1982 when the Meyer family took over Cabrefay? There were a little over 700 ski resorts in the United States. Since then, we've lost a little over 350 of those ski resorts. So Cadillac should be pretty happy that we still have a ski resort here, because a lot of other communities across the United States have lost similar ski resorts. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands the economic impact and how cool it is that we have a ski resort in our backyard. It's not, everybody can say that, and I think more people should partake in some of the different offers and programs that we have to be able to get kids and get adults out skiing and just try it. So I'll let Pete take over. We're actually celebrating the 75th anniversary with these banners that have been already approved by MDOT, and they would be on different light posts throughout downtown, and he'll hand that out, and you can pass them down.
There's copies in your packets as well.
This is actually the final revised one, Marcus.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure everybody had the final, the final version of-
Thank you, Joy.
-what was submitted to MDOT for the final, their final files as well.
Beautiful. I saw the-
So one side will be promoting, you know, will be showing skiing, and one side will be showing snowboarding.
Nice.
We're at Cabrefay, we're excited about it. We're very excited about our history. We have a tremendous history. There's a lot of people that learned to ski and snowboard at Cabrefay, and what's neat is a lot of them are coming back to Cabrefay and teaching their kids. So this season is just about celebrating that history and trying to celebrate as much as we can.
Awesome. Thanks, Pete. Thank you. I want to thank your family on behalf of the city, too, for their efforts over the last 40 years? 30?
About 30 years.
30 years, yeah, yeah. So stay tuned. There's more things coming up, but this is just one thing that physically people will see around town, celebrating skiing and snowboarding and Cabrefay in the area.
And, no, that's a two-sided banner. So one side has a skier and one has a snowboarder, and one interesting piece of that banner is the graphic of the skier and the graphic of the snowboarder are both people from Cadillac. So it's part of our celebration one night.
Those are recent pictures, or?
Those were both taken, well, one was from last season. The one in the flannel shirt was from last season.
Yep.
And the skier was probably taken three years ago, so-
Awesome.
Relatively recent.
Well, you're doing a great job out there. Appreciate the changes, and it's kept it alive. It's a nice historic thing that a lot of us, growing up here, enjoyed, and it's good to see the Meyers doing this for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks, Joy.
That's it? Any questions for us?
Yep. Anybody with questions for Pete or Joy about the, maybe the exact name now is?
Exact name is Cabrefay Peaks. And the name had always been Cabrefay Ski Resort, as you had mentioned, but once we had, through development of the hills, and we added the second peak of North Peak-
Yep.
And that was added in 1992, and we changed the name from Cabrefay to Cabrefay Peaks at that time.
Great. It's a great place. I recommend it to everybody who wants to learn to ski or does ski. It works perfectly for us here, and it does draw people in that we take for granted, probably, and should. So thank you.
I think these banners are great, the design of them. I'm thinking, you know, when they're done being hung-
She wants one.
-to make some money off of them. If you want to give one to any city council member. I can't accept gifts.
Noted.
Or donate, or a dollar. They might want one in here in the city hall. They're really cool.
Well, they do, they would fit in nicely here.
Order some extras. I think you could make some money off of them. I'll make a motion to grant the request from the Cadillac Area Visitors Bureau for the Downtown Banners honoring Cabrefay Ski Resort for its 75th anniversary.
Support.
We have a motion and a quick support. Anybody else have any questions or comments? For Pete, mine would be when, is the first day of skiing, which is, it's getting tougher and tougher for them, I know, with the weather, but any ideas? You going to guess?
I do, I do have an idea. And I don't know yet, but I know that we made snow on Monday and Tuesday night, and we made a lot of snow in two nights. It was pretty exciting, how much snow we were able to make in a short period of time. We've really been putting a lot of money in our snowmaking system. Unfortunately, it warmed up, and so the snow's out there, and it's been melting a little bit, but we're not going to lose it all. We still have some pretty big piles out there, so we'll get after it as soon as we can. It does not look like we'll be open this weekend based on the forecast, so we're hoping for the weekend after Thanksgiving.
That's okay. It'll be pent-up demand, and-
Exactly.
They'll get out there.
And Thanksgiving's early this year, so even if we got open the weekend after Thanksgiving, still, I'd call it still a good start to the season.
There you go. All right. Thank you.
And they just hired 80-some people last week.
We did. We had an annual job fair, and we had about 200, over 200 people come through, and of that, we'll employ at least 80.
Is that more than applying than usual, or pretty much the last?
No, it's been up and down. We've seen anywhere from 200 to 300 come through every year. It's the fifth year we've done it, and so it's usually right in that range.
Yeah. Well, thank you for providing those jobs. Those are important, not only for the folks that live out there, but our citizens are driving out there. I know a few that you hired.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's exciting. And for some more excitement, the folks that waited probably three hours at their last meeting are up next.
We got a motion.
We got a motion.
Okay. I apologize. We probably should pass the motion for their banner. Any other discussion? Thank you, Art. Hearing none, Chris.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Sorry about that. Motion carried. Now, the CCI gentlemen are here again tonight, and they're in good shape, because we're earlier, and we have, looks like, three public hearings tonight. The first one is a public hearing to adopt a resolution to adopt an application for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for Cadillac Casting in the amount of $352,600. And I'm going to open the public hearing at this point, kind of throw it over to staff as a lead-in, and we'll let CCI speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you mentioned, we did have quite a marathon meeting, our last go-around, so I do appreciate your patience, and thank you for, thank you for coming back. This first incentive is, I'm sure you'll mention, is for their cupola system, and it will help to retain six positions, and I'll let you take over this point.
Okay, so we can, that's second on the list, but we'll hit that one.
That is second?
It's on my list.
Oh.
Doesn't matter. We can talk about that one first.
Yeah.
So you all heard about our new pumps and piping and water cooling system? So we're putting this in to cover engineering that was done improperly upfront at the expansion of our 1990 expansion at Cadillac Casting. We're now correcting, we've re-studied it, we're correcting that. We've got the proper-sized pumps and piping, and we've got the proper-sized cooling tower to fit what we do. So that's the long and the short. It will cut down on our water consumption, and hence our sewer discharge.
Okay. All right. Why don't you have a seat if you don't mind, or at least stand aside? I don't know that anyone's going to come out and have much to say, other than, thanks for your investment into the city, but the public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to discuss the possible adoption of this resolution, which would approve an application for an IFTE certificate for Cadillac Casting incorporated in the amount of $352,600. Anyone else? Hearing, no one come forward? We could entertain a motion at this time, hopefully a vote as well.
I will make a motion that we approve the resolution as presented, that approves the industrial facilities tax exemption certificate in the amount of $352,600 for Cadillac Casting.
Okay. Support. And the public hearing is closed. We have a motion and support, and any other discussion from council?
And I know you're going to be coming up on both of them, but these are exciting, and maybe even in your next time, you can mention about, what you were saying earlier about how foundries are, there's less of them, but having one in Cadillac is great in the job market. I know this is retaining jobs, but the amount of jobs that you have on a regular basis is a big addition and a big help to our community, so thank you.
So we have a motion? Could we have a motion?
We do, we have.
We did. All right. And no discussion, sorry about that. And with that, no other discussion? Chris, could we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Next public hearing that is now open is the public hearing to adopt a resolution to approve an application for industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for Cadillac Castings, this time in the amount of $1,098,741. The public hearing is open. Marcus, anything you want to add on this?
Sure. This IFT abatement, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is for the acquisition of non-destructive testing equipment in your packet. It mentions how it'll allow them to obtain high-capacity, low-power X-ray units that will increase their throughput of the casting process, as well as a magnetic particle inspection machine, and I'm not going to pretend to really know what any of this does, but going off of what the packet, it says that it'll help them keep up with production demand and commitments that they have by their customers. According to the application, this IFT will help them maintain, or retain, rather, 15 positions.
Okay. A public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak on this item may come forward. And seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to council for a motion, hopefully.
I will make another motion for approving this resolution as presented as well for Cadillac Castings in the amount of $1,098,741 for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate.
Okay, there's a motion on the table?
Support.
And support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Congratulations again. Glad we could get you out of here sooner. You can stay if you wish, though. Thank you, guys. Good luck with your investment. Our third public hearing tonight is a public hearing to adopt a resolution to approve an application for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for Metal Punch Corp. in the amount of $127,322.63. Who would like to, we're going to open the public hearing. Marcus, can you give us a little on this, please?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This IFT request is for the acquisition of a Zeiss measuring machine in addition to the improvements that are being made to the room to accommodate the unit. According to their application, it will assist in the retention of two positions. Additionally, we did receive feedback from Metal Punch, and their apologies for not being able to make it this evening, and there is a note stating that the IFT request is for a new machine, which is required for inspection reports to the customer. This will retain current customers and bring in new customers as well.
Okay. Thank you, Marcus. Public hearing is open. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it over to council. Again, $127,322.63 is the number, and it's an IFT for the Metal Punch Corp. I got that right this time, Owen?
Sounds great to me.
Good job. Okay. Anybody else, no one else wishing to speak on it? We will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to approve the application for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate for Metal Punch-
All right.
...in the amount of $127,322.63.
Thank you.
Support.
And there's our support. Any discussion further? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Spolman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. No communications from Chris. Looks like we do have some appointments. Chris, what do we have on appointments?
Gwen Dubravik and Mark Snyder's positions on the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission are going to expire December 31st of 2012, and they have agreed to be reappointed.
And they're both three-year terms?
Yes.
Do you think we could do them both at once? Chris, Marcus, or Mike?
Make the appointments the ones, Mike?
That's the recommended motion here.
Yeah. Okay.
You could make a motion to appoint both of them at the same time.
All right.
It's hard to even think back that that commission has been here that long. Time flies, but I remember when we were first looking and had a, actually Jerry Adams, that's how he first got acquainted with Cadillac as a consultant, but that it's been here this long, and Mark's been on since 2005, so they're both doing a great job on that committee.
All right.
So do you want to make a motion, then?
Sure.
I would gladly make a motion to reappoint Quinn Dubravik and Mark Snyder for three-year terms, both ending on December 31st, 2015, to the Courthouse Hill Historic District Commission.
Very good. Can we-
Support.
Can we have support, then? Looks like we have-
We all support that.
Double support. And we do want to thank Gwen and Mark for their services. Mark is, as Art mentioned, since '05. That is a nice long term.
It's interesting that it's the Courthouse Hill Historic District, and the courthouse is not in it. Just an FYI.
All right.
That's a good point.
They voted to exempt themselves, apparently.
Any other discussion?
Interesting.
The courthouse voted, the county did.
The county board, yes, at the time, voted to do that.
Well, maybe they should revisit that, because I think they're-
Well, they're doing some renovation right now, and that's when the question came up. So I was surprised at that answer, because you would think that renovation that's being done to it is following some standards.
Hopefully, they're following the standards anyway, and I'm sure they're doing-
I think they are doing it nicely.
Yep. They do care about it. It would maybe be a good thing to revisit at some point, now that they have a different group of commissioners, or will shortly, even more different. New. Probably a better word. Okay. We do-
They're all kind of odd. Different, you know? I'm sorry. I'm really tired.
It's okay. Chris, on that note, on this motion and support, we'd like to vote on that, I'm sure.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Again, thank you to Gwen and Mark for their service on the HDC. Next up is our city manager's report. Mr. Petya, it looks like you've got a full slate of things for us tonight.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The first item under the report is a request from Mr. Greg Laurent to transfer the liquor license of the Busy Bee Bar into the name of the business. There is a Michigan Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs form in our packets that we're asking for the city council to consider approving. Although I've not met Mr. Laurent, I believe he is in the audience this evening. Thank you. And perhaps if there's anything you wanted to add, or if there are any questions Mr. Mayor and members of the council may have, this would be an opportunity to do so.
Okay. Mr. Laurent, would you mind coming forward?
Sure.
And you can introduce your partner as well tonight here.
I'm Greg Laurent, and I'm the manager of the Busy Bee Bar, and I reside at 514 and 1/2 North Mitchell Street.
I'm Tricia Poyer. I reside at 418 East Bremer Street, and I'm currently a new employee at the Busy Bee.
I am requesting, and you have the form in front of you, that currently the Busy Bee Bar liquor license is in the name of Sabrina Jo Laurent and DBA Busy Bee Bar. We were divorced on July 24th of this year, and in our divorce, the circuit court decreed that the license be transferred to me in the divorce. I submitted the paperwork to the Liquor Commission. They sent back a packet for me to have the local authorities, as well as the city council, approve this transfer. About three weeks ago, I met with Captain Wolfho, I believe that's correct, and he sat down Sergeant Golnick. He met with me at the bar. The license is pretty much transferring the same as it has been. The only request I put in there is that we'd like to put in a dance floor. I showed Sergeant Golnick where that was going to go, the improvements that we recently have made to the inside of the bar, and just how we wanted that all laid out. They came back a few days later and gave me approval on that, and I'm here to see if you guys would okay that. You're welcome to come, and if you need to look at, look through the bar and see what we want to do there before you make a decision. Or really, I'm just trying to -- I have people now that, when the jukebox is going, or we're doing karaoke, that get up and dance in their area, and it's a seventy-five-dollar fee to just upgrade the license to make it so everybody's happy and have a specified space that the people would, the customers would dance in. And we've, my wife, my ex-wife and I have had the bar since 2001, and we bought it from her mother-in-law, and things haven't worked out for us in the last few years. So it just was a better fit for me to have it than her, and we worked that out. And I'm here to request the -- I have a company that I formed. It's on that form. It's ALCJLLLC. And I just need your approval to have the Liquor Commission finish their process and okay me.
Okay. Am I a part of that process?
Yes.
Do we have the motion or the resolution that's in our packet, obviously? Is the -- we're good to go with this? Marcus, any concerns?
There weren't from police.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What, on here you have the dance permit checked off, but you also have entertainment permit. Can you explain that?
If you're going to have, right now, our license is, okay, I can have a karaoke. I can have somebody come in. People get up and sing songs, okay? But technically, entertainment allows me to have a DJ who plays music and says, "Come on and dance," have a dance floor area, and allows me, allows you to have entertainment to get customers to dance. Right now, as it is, the permit doesn't allow you to have a DJ and promote dancing.
Do you have to pay extra for that, too?
Pardon me?
Do you have to pay extra for that, too?
Well, it's just a seventy-five-dollar or more to your licensing fee, but they want to know that you're, what you're doing, if you're having a DJ, and, or even maybe have a small three-piece band there in the future. Some, you know, a drummer, a guitar, and a pianist or something to play some music. It might be an idea that I might incorporate one or twice, once or twice a month, which is something that we really don't have in downtown Cadillac and haven't had for quite some time. So.
Okay. Anyone with any questions to the representatives tonight from the, is it still going to be the Busy Bee, or is that a trade secret?
It's a trade secret. It could, it could, if any of you ever watched Bar Rescue on Sunday nights, the gentleman that does that show, John Trapper, goes to places, and very often, he does change the name, and he thinks that that changes your clientele. And if you're looking to change some clientele, which we are, that might be a possibility. And I'll have to be here again to let you know what the new name is and have you approve that, so.
If I may, he's done a great job. I've been there three weeks, and I've been a loyal customer for the last few years. He's revamped the inside. The clientele is great, the customer, the atmosphere. It's going to be a really great thing. If you approve this, this goes through, I think he's got a lot of great ideas. And it's something for the community. We don't have somewhere to go and dance. We don't have somewhere to sit and listen to music. And Greg's done a great job. And I think once that, this gets transferred, then there's less confusion, and it'd be really beneficial for his business.
All right. Anyone with any questions? Any other comments?
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of the Busy Bee Bar license into the name of the ALCJLLLC slash Greg, Gregory Scott Laurent.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. And any further or final discussion, final answers? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Congratulations. Good luck with the rest of your process, and we hope to see you back here with, it sounds like, a name change.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Keep it rolling, Marcus. I think you--
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is a request to approve an agreement with propertyroom.com for the sale of surplus and unclaimed property. To give you a brief summary, the city does collect property surplus and seized property in the Police Department that, from time to time, we would like to auction off. We have done some homework and have found that propertyroom.com seems to be a turnkey type of operation, where they'll basically come in, collect all of the, all the property that we have, and auction it off for the city on its own behalf. They do receive a 50% commission fee for the first $1,000 of the winning bids, and then a 25% commission fee for the remainder of the winning bids above $1,000. The city will be able to reduce some storage costs that we have currently. We have to rent space in order to hold on to some of the items that we, that we have, like bicycles and things of that nature. And basically, all of those, all of those costs will then get essentially transferred over to propertyroom.com. So there is a detailed recommendation that is from Sergeant Eller that went to Captain Wolfho that's in the packet as well, that followed the summary that Captain Wolfho put in with respect to the communication piece. And certainly Owen or I, or even Mike, can address any questions that you might have.
Okay. Anyone with any questions or concerns?
So this then would be like an ongoing thing, whereas items come?
It would be an ongoing auction, or ongoing opportunity, depending upon the number of items that we have. And we would go out and put, you know, a link on our website and publicly notice that there's things that have been, you know, taken away and direct people as to how to gain access to them, if they wish.
That's a great idea.
The neat thing, too, is it expands the bidders, taking it from a small group to a large group. It's probably, especially when we get into the larger items, you're going to have more people with opportunities. And, you know, I don't know if, I noticed this was from Sergeant Eric Eller. Was he, is he the one that kind of came up with the idea?
He was. He runs the evidence room, doesn't he? Or is in charge?
He is involved in the evidence room.
It's a neat idea. Very good idea.
I know we have a lot of bikes.
We do.
It's kind of hard to ship bikes. I don't know how they do that when they auction them off, but it's not my concern.
The only, the only other part I would add is that there's, the statute was, and I've talked to Matt about this as well, the statute was amended to specifically authorize the municipality to authorize the donation of all bikes to state-licensed charitable facilities. So depending on how that works out, I think your motion should include the ability to donate those bikes to state-licensed charitable organizations, because it may be that you have enough bikes where you could donate some of them, auction some of them, but you wouldn't want to come back for a case-by-case approval of that. But the statute does allow you to authorize that.
That's a good point, Mike.
Is that specifically only for bikes?
Yeah, it's specifically only for bicycles.
Or if we wanted to start a bike program in the community, where people could pick up a bike and ride it and get someplace and then drop it back off. Like a Red Bike Program or Green Bike.
Travers had that, or probably still has that. Okay. So we're going to need a motion that's slightly modified than maybe what we thought of. So who would like to make that?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with propertyroom.com to auction off the surplus seized and abandoned property, with also putting in this motion the right for the city when it comes to bikes to be able to give it to--
A state, a state licensed charitable organization.
Exactly. The state-licensed charitable organizations.
Support.
Okay, we have--
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Gentlemen, we have a motion and support. Any further conversation? Hearing none. Could we please have a roll call, Chris?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is with respect to ultraviolet lamps. The city does use UV lamps to disinfect, as part of the disinfection process of wastewater in our wastewater treatment plant. Bids were solicited, and I do want to draw your attention to the asterisks within the, within the packet. There were a couple of bids that were received, in which only two of the three items were, mandatory items were included, and therefore, the bids did not count. Important to note that if they were included, then they, their prices did go up significantly. But in any event, it is recommended at this time that the purchase of ultraviolet lamps, quartz tubes, and wipers be awarded to Livingston Micrographics LLC of Brighton, Michigan, in the amount of $30,006.72. Funds are available in the water and sewer fund, and Jeff DeLan is here, our utilities director, this evening, should you have any technical questions.
I'll make that motion to approve the purchase of the UV lamps from Livingston Micrographics LLC of Brighton, Michigan, in the amount of $30,006.72.
Support.
Okay. Any discussion about the UV lamps? Hearing none. Could we please have a roll call, Chris?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The next item is with respect to bids and the recommendation regarding the purchase of police in-car camera upgrade. Sorry if it sounds a little rough coming out, but bids were recently accepted to upgrade the department's L-3 slash mobile vision flashback system. This is the video camera system in our patrol cars. The current system was acquired in 2003, and at this time, it's essentially functionally obsolete and is in need of significant upgrade or an outright replacement. We did have some significant discussion at the staff level about what to look at, whether we should be looking at a full, a full upgrade, or looking at just ditching the system and replacing it. And we decided after, and Owen can attest after several, several conversations on it, that, that we'd like to stick with the L3 mobile vision system, because it is a, as the communication mentions, a rugged, reliable system, and it has performed well over the last nine years. The upgrade will essentially reuse the existing optics and monitors that are within the units, the patrol units, but will replace the following components: the in-car DVR, the wireless microphone pack technology, new microphone pack charging stations, new transmitting antennas, new wireless access points in our garage in north side of the building, the operational software that's required, and the addition of a second rear seat infrared camera to monitor passengers and prisoners. Three, three bids were received, and the recommendation is to go with the upgrade from L3 mobile vision for the amount of $19,164.
Okay. Thank you, Marcus. Anyone, any discussion prior to the motion? If not, could we have a motion?
The only question, I was shocked at the difference between the largest bid, and they, did they actually bid for the same?
Same. They bid their own camera system, but--
That did the same--
Yeah, the L3 is proprietary software, but that's kind of why we put it out there, is to say, well, what would it cost to upgrade? What would it cost for a, a complete replacement? So, and then the one in the middle is kind of some different technology, basically, that's, that they didn't want to go with that, that one either, so.
Yeah. OEM wouldn't upgrade the system. They would just rip everything out and put all new stuff in.
Which is almost three times the cost.
Yeah. Yeah.
For how many vehicles is this?
Six.
Six.
Okay. Do we have a motion and support? Chris, could we have--
He's breathing. I'm sorry. I thought you were going to give a-- I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the L3 mobile vision system in the amount of $19,164 for the upgrade of the patrol units in-car video system.
Okay, thank you.
Support.
And there's support. Any other discussion? Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. The next item is with respect to bids and a recommendation regarding the purchase of a work truck for the street department. The city did receive sealed bids, excuse me, sealed bids for the purchase of a heavy-duty one-ton work truck. The recommendation at this time is to go with Garber Chevrolet of Midland. I do want to mention that when applying the local purchasing preference policy, Fox Ford is actually looking like the lowest bidder. However, what this communication doesn't mention, and it was our fault for not having a chance to amend it before it went to print, is that it wasn't for the same, the same mechanicals of the vehicle. We did a double check to make sure, apples to apples, that everything was the same. And it turns out that the drive system, and Owen, was it the drive ratio or the gear ratio system? There was something--
Lots of acronyms that accountants like me don't understand.
Okay. It had something to do with the, with the actual drive system of the truck, and the transmission was completely different. And Fox had advised that they could, they could put in the one that we had specked out, but in doing so, it, again, brought the price significantly higher. Both the finance director and myself have had an opportunity at separate times to actually talk with the manager of our, of our local dealership. And one of the issues that they're having to face is that the state has contracts with several dealers across the state, in which they're able to get these, the specialized pricing, likely because of the bulk purchasing that they do. Garber Chevrolet happens to be one of those dealerships that, that is authorized through the state for special pricing, and it makes it very, very difficult for local dealers to come close. Again, we did our due diligence to make sure that we were comparing apples to apples. Turns out that we weren't, but when we tried to, to see if there was a substitution possible, they couldn't come close to the price that was being here, and it was, it was over the, the purchasing threshold. So the recommendation this evening is to go with Garber Chevrolet in an amount of $23,260.
Do you know if we, did we ask for bids from Chevrolet dealers in this area?
The bids went on Mitten, I believe, and--
They did. They went on, on the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network. They went in our newspaper, and we had reached out to some local dealers, I assume all of them. That was what we were gonna, gonna do, so.
Do you know if, what it takes for a dealership to be able to be on the state's list at all?
I, I don't. I don't. I do know that, again, speaking with the manager informally, I actually saw him at the Business Expo about a month or so ago. He had mentioned that that's something that is the, you know, the ownership of the, of their dealer. It's something that they would have to want to, to get involved in. And then, again, it's, it's about purchasing in bulk.
Right.
So, which--
Probably have to have a lot of capital upfront.
Any other discussion on this item regarding the work truck for the street department? Hearing nothing. Could we have a motion and support?
I make a motion to approve the purchase of a one-ton work truck from Garber Chevrolet of Midland, Michigan, in the amount of $23,260.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
There is any further discussion? If not, Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Barnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Next item, F.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is directly relating to the discussion that city council had a couple of weeks ago with respect to a request from the First Housing Corporation to have the city council consider putting a payment in lieu of taxes program in place for the Cadillac Shores housing development that's here currently in the city of Cadillac. The purpose of having it at our last meeting was to introduce the item, see if there was some relative interest by the city council in moving it forward for the anticipation of at this meeting, perhaps having the setting of a public hearing. Since our last meeting and this meeting, and working with the city attorney, doing, as a part of their due diligence, it was determined that there was actually a section of code, Section 12-19, that actually makes this something that we can't just do. And if you don't mind, I'll read the section of code for the public record. It states, "Section 12-19, no exemptions granted except for elderly and handicapped persons." The section of code reads as follows: "The city hereby determines that no exemptions under the provisions of Section 15 Subsection A1 of the State Housing Authority Act of 1966, Public Act Number 346 of 1966, shall be granted or applied to any class of housing projects utilized or in existence in the city, except for elderly and handicapped persons. Instead, the city reviews requests for exemptions under Section 15 Subsection A5 of the Act. This section shall cancel and revoke the tax exemption claimed by Cadillac Shores Limited Dividend Housing Association dated October 26, 1983." I can mention or advise at this point that I have had-- I can mention or advise at this point that I have had some lengthy conversation with Owen Roberts, our finance director, talking about, if you will, the pros and cons of this type of a program, of a payment in lieu of taxes. If your memories may serve you correct, at the last council meeting, Mr. Gershak, who is in attendance this evening, had mentioned that they're looking at investing approximately $1.6 million into the facility. The reason for requesting the pilot at this point is because it makes them much more likely in obtaining a MISTHA grant, a Michigan State Housing Development Authority grant, that could add perhaps another million and a half dollars to the project, which, at the end of the day, would certainly, I think, create a much better quality of life for residents of our community that live in Cadillac Shores, and certainly could, one could argue, might have a trickle-down effect of appreciating the property value in the general vicinity. It was also mentioned by Mr. Gershak at our last meeting that the taxes paid to the city would basically be held flat. Owen Roberts, our finance director, advised of the same. So, the city isn't out anything. We're not gonna, we wouldn't capture any additional increment, any additional appreciation of the value of the property, but we also wouldn't lose any revenues being currently paid to the city by the property taxes that were currently are assessed. I know I'm throwing a lot out there, but to bring it all back to where we're at tonight, the city council needs to have a general discussion as to whether or not you're interested in having us amend and/or repeal, repeal rather, excuse me, this section of our code to even allow the consideration of setting a public hearing for the purposes of having this pilot considered by the city council at a time in the future.
Is that, I'm sorry, is that code only for the Cadillac Shores development?
No, this code, as I understand it, and Mike, you can definitely clarify if I get this wrong, this code is for any development that's not specifically for elderly or handicapped persons, and then it further goes on to revoke a pilot that was put in place in 1983, so.
Okay, how do we pass other pilots if it's against our code?
I was just gonna ask on the last one.
I know we have at least one that was...
We're still looking into it.
Hollander?
Don't know.
Was it the Hollander project?
I think it was, the second one that he brought to us.
I don't know.
Was on the council at that time. The first one I was in 99.
I'm wondering if it was even, like other things, maybe they, it wasn't even noted because I don't recall that. I know after Mr. Roberts, when you mentioned that to me today, and I was thinking about it more, and then I looked back and I was like, wow, this one was done way before, I was, the ordinance at least was done before I was on council, in terms of the ordinance. But I don't know, I mean, I don't know if it is, but does anybody know with that 15A5?
I'm wondering, is there a difference between the state housing authority and then HUD? You know, if there's a difference between the state and then the federal? And maybe the Hollander project used HUD dollars and not MISTHA dollars?
I don't know.
Yeah, in the ordinance for Northland Meadows, which is the one that was, it was actually adopted in 2004, and they didn't commence construction within a year, so apparently it expired, and so then it was re-approved in 2006. It explicitly talks about a low-income housing tax credit program from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. It goes on to say, "On certain property located in the city of Cadillac is legally described to serve elderly persons and persons and families of low to moderate income." So, there may have been some language in there that there was some comfort in moving forward because it explicitly referenced elderly, but I can only guess at this point, but...
Okay. Any, anything else, Marcus? Mr. Gershak, I know, wants to talk to us.
I was just gonna...
All right. What do you have for us tonight, sir? Good to see you again. Yep, thanks for being patient.
First of all, I would like to clarify, you were talking about HUD and MISTHA, about the pilot. You can have a pilot with HUD or MISTHA. I've seen that in both cases. Of course, the financing with MISTHA, our property, we'd be able to invest $3.2 million, which would be beneficial to the residents, would also be beneficial to the community, which, you know, would upgrade the property, but 60% of the jobs that are going to be created from the construction, one company, for example, will be Williams Construction, we're going to be creating jobs, or people will be keeping their jobs longer because of this construction. So, I'd like to mention that. And if the pilot is not passed, and if the renovation, if the refinancing goes through, and there are renovations, there's gonna be a lot less renovations than if there was with the $3.2 million with the pilot. And we're really here, we want to serve our residents, we want to provide them the best amenities, the best property possible, and we want to do this for next 35 years.
Can you briefly explain again what the differences would be if you didn't get the pilot with the renovations versus if you did get it? You went through a list last time you were here.
Briefly, if we have a pilot, basically it sets everything, so we have a budgetable taxes. When the investors come in, they want to know that this is going to be this cost, you know, every, we have projections for the next, basically, 20 years of how much costs, how much income's gonna be coming in, how much costs are, so that way, everything is locked in, so that way, they'll be able to base the mortgage on that, those amounts, which can give us the maximum amount of investment to the property.
Can, what I'm asking, and I probably didn't ask it well, is if you could name the renovations that you're planning to do there, like...
Okay, I'm sorry, or I just didn't answer your question.
Yeah, who knows? It was good information that you gave us, so now you can give us some more. You talked about dishwashers and...
We're gonna be putting dishwashers, air conditioners, we're gonna be repaving, we're gonna be putting any cabinets in there, over 10 years old, appliances, new lighting, we're gonna be doing some exterior work, some landscaping. Trying to remember all those items off the top of my head. Actually, if you wanted to have a list...
Right, where I was, what I was trying to get was, what would you do if you didn't have the pilot versus what extra amenities would you be able to do with the pilot?
A lot less, and we'd have to go back and re-figure that out, but originally, it would probably be a lot less because the dollar, the amount that we can project for savings, just with budgetable savings, we would be able to hit the maximum 3.2. I can't give you a dollar figure, unfortunately, but I know it would be a lot less. We'd have to go back and try to re-figure everything out. And it's possible the investors could lose their stomach for it also and say, we don't want to do that.
Right.
It's also, MISTHA is more favorable to pilots versus non-pilots.
Marcus, you indicated we wouldn't be out anything, but obviously, they'd like the pilot to reduce their tax burden, and do we, and Mr. Gershak said he didn't have the numbers, that would be something we would have to add ordinarily, no matter who would be applying if we do change this. I know we're gonna get back on topic, which is, do we want to set this code thing aside?
But we do have some, if you will, back in the envelope of numbers. Owen, I don't know if you're prepared to mention them this evening, but it would actually freeze us in time from where we are now, if I'm saying this correctly.
Yeah, basically, the, in some brief exchanges that we've had and some information that they sent, they calculated it at the percentage that would hold the property taxes at what they're currently paying on the facility now, so. And then, going forward, then it just kind of keeps pace with whatever happens to the change in the approved rental rates. Ideally, then, we would get a little bit of a growing percentage. The true cost is whatever impact any development they would do would have on the taxable value, you wouldn't take advantage of that, but...
We'd be waving...
We wouldn't be losing any money based on the proposal from where we are this fiscal year, so.
Only loss we would have is the appreciated amount that would be coming ordinarily...
As a result of the development, yes.
Assuming that would still go through even without a pilot, which it might not.
And if I may add, also, the taxable, the assessable value has been decreasing for the last several years, and this is Michigan, and I hope it increases, but it could decrease also.
Sure.
So, it would also be beneficial to the city in that aspect.
Okay. All right.
And we mentioned last time, just to point it out, that there certainly would not be, when you're doing renovations, to be fair, there would not be a dollar-for-dollar increase in taxable value based on the dollar amount of investment that they, if they put in $3 million, the taxable value would not go up $1.5 million by any means, so.
Okay, well, that's an interesting discovery that we've made. Thank you for finding that.
Yeah.
Counsel?
I just wanted to add, for counsel's benefit too, Mr. Mayor, that in a way, although it's a completely different program, different rules, similar to what the city does for our industrial citizens through the passages of tax abatements, you know, personal real property tax abatements, this is, if you will, a program or an incentive that we're able to consider and look at for these types of projects as well, so.
Okay. It says no action required, Marcus, as far as tonight, as far as counsel, although, what do you want to do about the discussion side of the code and...
Well, Mr. Mayor, that's a great question, and really, a lot of the conversation that we had this evening would be premature unless the council's willing to look at having an update made to that section of code. That's what I need to glean from this evening, and if that is the case, presumably, we could at our next meeting have an update to the ordinance. And Mike, could we also do a public hearing setting at that time as well? Or do we need to space it a little bit more? I'm thinking about the timing.
A public hearing for the ordinance change?
Well, you have to do a public hearing for the ordinance change, as well as a public setting of a public hearing for the pilot program itself, both of which would take you out, I'm assuming, to the second meeting of December, if we have the setting of that occurring at the first meeting of December. Is that, is that all right?
Yeah, I'll have to look at the timeline.
Okay.
But then maybe doable.
So, that could be a possible possibility. Again, if the council is willing to have us look at either amending, probably amending this section of code, I don't think you're gonna repeal it, are we?
No, I suspect that, hearing the discussion, the council would like to possibly amend it to add low-income housing to the already provided for elderly housing projects.
What kind of can of, would that open up a can of worms that would be difficult to manage, or...
I don't believe so, because you still retain decision-making authority over particular projects and whether you're going to allow a payment in lieu of taxes. So, it's not mandatory, just because you do for one, you may not find all projects necessary to do that for, and you can review those on a case-by-case basis.
But herein lies one of the issues, and I think that we need to take our time with this, frankly, because there's a reason why we did this in 1983.
Which is?
I don't know. I had no idea.
Same question I had.
I would love to have that information and what was behind it, why we didn't include low income at that time, why it was only for elderly and handicapped. And then I also know that, you know, we've had a lot of, throughout the years, a lot of developers and other property owners come before council and then deny pilots. And, you know, so there's a sense of justice and fairness here, too, that needs to be taken into consideration, and I would like at least to make sure we plan this with enough time for the public hearings so that people are aware of maybe where we're headed with this, so that we can hear from all sides related to this. I think that's really important.
Okay. If I, if, the only thing I'll add, and I don't know right now what the answer is with respect to where council was back in the 80s, but I could add that at this time, the development's already in place with respect to looking at what may happen in the future and future developments coming forward that aren't yet here. Perhaps, you know, the council could take the opinion of not wanting to encourage any additional low-income housing being built. This particular facility is already built and it's already here, and I don't know if that makes any difference in the thinking of council or not, I just wanted to add that, just to have you guys chew on it a little bit, that unlike some that might come forward looking for a new project, this one, this one's already here.
We had our own housing commission come forward last year with a proposal, you know, and then they took it off the table, but there's that to consider.
There's been a history, I know, and again, I talked briefly with Owen on this today about, there had been some effort, and I'm guessing, I'm gonna say it was probably 2002 was when we started, we spent a lot of time, I was on a committee with then-council member Boss, we were on a committee for pilots, we met with multiple ones, there was a lot of items. I hear what you're saying about really studying this, because at the time, there was a lot of discussion from different angles. Number one was the whole housing market. There was some studies done, and that was looked at in terms of what housing availability was here, what are some of the requirements, some of them had a little different avenues. It was mixed, it was very mixed in terms of our votes, and we did deny some. There was also the part that I hadn't really thought of until was the, you had a lot of private landlords that are looking at this as a competition and had addressed some concerns about, you know, them investing in the community, how does it affect that? So, there was a lot of areas that come in, and I think you bring up some valid points about...
I was on the other side of the table. I was the one who was coming to council asking for pilots because there was such a need for low-income housing at the time, and I remember a lot of this discussion, and I remember the smaller landlords really had a voice in it, because they thought it was unfair competition.
That's why I asked if there was a can of worms about to be opened.
I wonder, you said that, that's where I thought you were heading. They also, the one that was put in, if you, I remember when I got on city council in 2000, they didn't have enough employees for the manufacturing jobs, and they didn't have the housing. And the one that did end up coming in had a, there was a certain portion of it, I believe, that was off of their wages and such, in terms of, that this was looked at, that one in particular was looked at a way to help fulfill that need. And so, that is something valid to bring up about why there were these steps and how do we move forward, and you're right, too, it was, everything we had done prior was all gonna be new development at those times.
Is, with low-income housing, is it, is there, at Cadillac Shores, is there a sliding, sliding rent scale based on income?
The rent is 30% of their income. We serve low, it says low income, actually, technically, low income's 80%. Most of the people in our property are extremely low-income, which means they're under 30%. We have many people, it's probably about 40 units that are, they actually have what's called zero income, they have no income. So, we're not talking that these are people that have a lot of extra spare money, that if this facility was not here, who knows where they would live, or the quality of their, of the housing that they would be living in, it would be probably more rundown. We try our best to keep everything up to the best possible, and with this renovation, we'd be able to make it even better for our residents, and we feel that, you know, there's definitely a need in this community to serve this type of clientele.
Would there be a way to, within it, because I know, like, folks that have one or two renovations... rental units that, where it's, they're not expensive to rent, and it's people with lower incomes perhaps that are renting those, but where it is not a percentage, but, you know, where it's, is there a way to word that so that it is, would be for places that do offer that sliding scale or that percentage, or, I don't know how to?
You can mention Section 8. We, we have a Section 8 program.
So maybe for properties that, that can use the Section 8 vouchers, or?
We actually have Section 8, there's two different types of Section 8. The Section 8 that we have is called project-based, which means when you, if you were to move into our property, you will receive Section 8 funding. If you leave the property, you no longer have Section 8. The other type of Section 8 is a voucher, so you have it with you, so you can go, oh, I want to move here, you can move here, we cannot accept those at our property, but some properties will accept them. So, but we are 100% Section 8.
Is there anything that you heard us say you'd like to clear up or comment on?
Um, just one last thing. My understanding is that even though there is an ordinance on the books, that there were some properties that were not elderly and handicapped that were approved, such as Northland Meadows, which was approved in August of 2006. I think it's only fair that if, you know, one property was allowed to have a pilot, that it would be fair that we are at least given the opportunity to go in front of council to have a public hearing for that. Okay.
Got to make it legal, though. I don't want to, you know, if, if, if our, if our ordinance says that we can't, I don't want to be having a hearing on something that would be illegal for us to do. So if the first step would be to amend the ordinance, then I would rather see that happen and then provide for that.
Okay, and the question comes back to what council member Spelman brought up, what's the legislative history of why it's narrowed down to those two or small subgroups that don't include simple income issue folks.
So we could move in that direction, and hopefully, we can do our, somebody can do the research and get us that information.
We'll definitely look to see what we have on the books, maybe there are some folks we could call, see what, what was, you know, sort of the philosophy at that time. And we can, again, depending upon the dates and the processes that's established by our charter, we can even work towards a dual process of looking at setting the, the hearing and introducing the ordinance, as well as setting the, the hearing for the, for the program itself.
We've had work sessions on these in the past, I'm not offering that up, but we had, have had those. We had one at the end of the nineties that went down three to two. I voted for it, but it was a three-two vote, Gordon Boss was, I think, the other vote, and there was, it was defeated. That was, that was Mr. Hollander's project that ended up coming back in a different shape and form years later. Is that the one on 206?
I think he's the developer on the.
Northland?
Yes. That's Northland Meadows, so, yes.
So he kept coming back, which was, it took over seven years, I think, to get that completed. Years won't hopefully go that long.
I was just going to mention.
He starts to sweat profusely.
Yeah, I know, I'm sweating a little bit. We, we were hoping to go to board, to the MISTHA board, to get this project approved in December, and in part, if it could happen quicker, it would be better, and I understand that you're trying to overturn the ordinance, but sometimes the investors, especially in Michigan, they, they get a little squirrely and sometimes change your mind, and we don't want to scare the investor away, if, the longer it takes, the, the more chance that this deal could fall through.
There's not going to be more people in the apartments, obviously, that would be some of the arguments made, because there are some service issues we have with different sectors of our community, and that's a busy place sometimes for our, our service providers. That's another thing to look at, but there wouldn't be more people there, you're already there anyway.
Correct.
If, if members of the city council would like, we could certainly look at perhaps meeting at six o'clock or a quarter to six in advance of your next meeting to provide more opportunity to talk about the item. Just throwing that out there, you mentioned work session.
Historically, we used to. You're okay, I'm talking right with you, but they historically have had work sessions, my recollection, so maybe you can help me out with that.
We, we absolutely did, we had a committee, and then there was, prior to this one being approved, that it was the same setup where we had a work session. You're right. That was on a specific, I, I do have to say, in memory, I don't ever recall the ordinance coming into play. I know we handled the pilot, but don't ever recall a discussion in terms of an ordinance that was here. I, that was news to me today. I would, I thought I was maybe mixed up with a resolution, but I, I think we may have done a resolution, you know, or maybe that's what was required to approve the pilot, but I don't recall this ordinance coming in. So we always did just deal with the pilot in those work sessions.
And this could be looked at as a $3 billion investment into our community, which I don't recall the last one we turned away, but there will definitely be a discussion on this.
Yeah.
So, what is the slow track and what's the fast track?
Though, again, just to try to summarize, with respect to our next meeting, do we have a budget? I don't think we have anything set up, do we, Owen?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Perhaps, again, offering, if you guys would like to meet maybe at a quarter to six for a work session, that's something that we can, we can look at maybe doing. We'll try to get as much background information, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council as possible.
That'd be great, like, how many we've passed, how many we haven't, what were the, just the, the guts of each one of those?
And additionally, I would look to try to have at least on the, on the regular agenda as well, a recommendation regarding an amendment to the section of code accordingly, again, to try to keep the, the clock moving on. Certainly, council does not have to approve it, but if it's easier, it's easier to have it on the agenda than have you table it versus to not have it at all. And so we would also look at doing the same with trying to set up the process for a public hearing as well. Again, if the, if the timing would provide it, there would be some nuances we would need to work out, I think, and I'm looking at Mike, making sure that, you know, one has to come before the other, obviously, and, again, for the benefit of keeping the clock going, but certainly, council would have the ability of tabling anything as well or not acting on it. So.
I don't think, too, that you could approve such a request until such time as the amendments to the ordinance became effective.
Twenty days.
Twenty-one days.
That's right.
So you're looking at Jan, or, you know, mid-January, basically, by the time there's an effective, effective ordinance in place, assuming that everything lines up for the end of, you know, for December.
Okay. Anything else? I appreciate you both coming again tonight and sitting through our meeting and listening to our comments.
Well, thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Look forward to seeing you again.
I was just going to mention, for Mr. Greshack's, we'll certainly keep you in the loop, so.
So, do you want to do that at this point, or in the good of the order, set the?
Your call.
The work session?
I already put it in my calendar.
Okay. Do you want to vote on that, folks, real quickly here?
So I move that we set a work session for December 3rd at 5:45 PM, for the purpose of blah, blah, blah.
For the purpose of discussing the section 12-19 of the Cadillac City Code as it pertains to the pilot program.
Excellent.
Requested by First House Corporation.
Excellent translation of my blah, 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 thank you.
Is that what you put in your calendar? Blah, blah, blah.
Okay, we have a motion and support, and could we have a roll call? Chris?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Good to see you again, and you're, I'm sure you're going to be invited to our work session, which is in a room back there.
They are public. Yes.
Said you ordered your tires.
All right, no, no introduction of ordinances and resolutions, but we do have a proposed adoption of an ordinance and resolution, and Marcus, this looks like the hardship exemption policy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, that is correct. And if I could have one moment, just to pull it up, I thought I had it and I was mistaken. Nope, you know what, it's not, it's not online. Oh, yes, it is. Sorry about that. That works, too. Thank you. There was basically one contextual change made to the policy, where it now includes reference to case law from 2012. Essentially, section, paragraph five under examples has now been amended to include a section B in the reference to the Ferraro versus Walton Township case of 2012, which states that when determining the total household income of an applicant, the city shall not include or consider monies the applicant receives from claiming a household property tax credit, and returns concerning the homestead property tax credit may be used only to ensure compliance with paragraph four of the policy. And for reference, paragraph four of the policy, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council refers to the 50% and 100% rule, which basically means that hardship exemptions may be granted by the city for a maximum of 50% of the amount of the property tax, considering any amount returned pursuant to the Michigan Homestead Property Tax Credit, and that in no case shall the combination of the Michigan Homestead Property Tax Credit and the hardship exemption granted by the city exceed 100%. This essentially closes a potential loophole where folks may have been receiving more than 100% back.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Petcha. Is there any discussion, or would we have a motion and support on this?
The only discussion I could bring up in terms of, we do get quite a few hardship exemptions, the board review every year, and locally, we've done a really good job of really trying to stay consistent with our policy. These changes came, and it sounds like even from some state changes. The good news is I know they did switch the family income to household, which actually is something that is, is going to benefit us, because that's come into play a few times with that aspect. And then the clarification with the property tax, basically, just to kind of explain one step further is the, a lot of individuals don't even know this, we try to encourage them to apply for the Michigan Homestead Property Tax Credit. It's something that they do on their taxes. This is, actually, anybody that's listening, a lot of times, they get told, the people that need these are told you don't have to do a tax return. So a lot of seniors especially that are, that are in an income, they feel, we don't have to do a tax return because we don't make enough income. One of the things that they lose by doing that is they, they, they can't get the Michigan Homestead Property Tax Credit, they also don't get the heating credit, so we've tried to really emphasize this. The homestead property tax credit comes back to them. So there was a time we, people were, if the homestead property tax credit was 75% of their, their full taxes, we, we can only give the remainder 25%. Years ago, we weren't aware of this, and so some people could have actually made money. And so this, we can give up to 100, so that they're 100% set, but the city's still receiving the property tax, the 50%, they just get a credit back from the state. So this is, this process has been a little unclear in some of the terminology, and we've been really focusing on section four a lot, but, so it looks, it looks like we have a good plan, there has been a lot more from the state. They've also been requiring verification, so people do have to turn in a tax return in order to apply. I know they, they sometimes get frustrated with that, but most people come out ahead by doing that.
Good information.
Thank you.
Yep, and served a couple of years on that board, 12 at this point and running?
Yes.
Thank you for that service and your perspective on the, on the issue. Anyone else with any other questions? And if not, maybe just a motion would be appropriate.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the amendment to the city's hardship exemption policy as presented.
Okay, motion and support. Any other comments on it? Hearing non, Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. No reports or minutes of boards and commissions. Oh, I take that back, Marcus, looks like we have a couple, CWTA and the DDA, anything in those minutes that would be noteworthy for the council staff or the community?
I just wanted to mention very briefly, for the DDA minutes, there was discussion of the Cabrefay banners, the DDA was definitely in favor of the anniversary banners. Also, there was the, some discussion about the assessable audible pedestrian signals. As council mayor may not recall, this is audible signal devices for the hearing impaired that project is going to happen, it's now with MDOT.
All right, was, was that a DDA project, the paid for by the DDA, or the?
No, it's paid all through outside funding, through federal sources that then get passed through the state.
And I'm talking about the, the banners.
Oh, no, I don't believe so, I believe that that is paid directly through Cabrefay Peaks.
Awesome. Great. Okay. I think that does it for that, nothing else on those two sets of minutes. Public comments are back on the table, it's requested that comment time be limited to three minutes. Anyone? On speaking should do so? Anyone lying down on the chairs back there, Owen? Like a school bus.
Before we lock the doors.
That's what happened to me. All right, tabled items are none, good of the order. And I will stick again with my new tradition of starting with the side, right side from my side, left from the community, council member Spelman.
Oh, just a couple of things, I, it was nice, I'm glad that you pulled out of the consent agenda, the discussion or the presentation from Cabrefay Ski Resort/Peaks, because it really was nice to highlight them, and it's exciting. Joy was absolutely right, we are lucky to have a ski resort in our community or in the area. You know, the, the role that that place has played in the lives of so many youth that have grown up in this community, it's just, it's amazing. I wish I had had something like that when I was a kid, so. My kids took advantage of the program through the schools, and it was great. I'm glad to see that the stakes are out on the Keith McKellup Walkway and that we're going to be plowing it this winter to clear it from snow, so that people will have another place to walk in the community in the winter, and I'm really excited about that. I want to thank the city staff for all the work that they've put into doing that, and we do have much to be thankful for in this community, and it's nice to be able to reflect on that as we enter into our Thanksgiving holiday. Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Thank you. Councilmembers Shippers?
Thank you, and building on that theme, I'd like to especially thank the staff here at the city and the volunteers and all of the committees and boards and people that participate in our community, and that's one of the things that makes it a really good place. Also, people that just go out of their way individually to do something nice for other people, I've been seeing a lot of that lately. And I would also like to send out a happy birthday to my husband, who watches this every time, and let him know that the song, the answer, the song has been answered, and yes, I do still need you, and I will still feed you, and happy 64.
Was it, did he have his birthday, was there a party, or? Was it? Did he have his birthday? Was there a party or?
Yeah, yesterday we did a music Sunday.
All right. Happy birthday, David.
He's probably excited you gave his age.
Yeah.
Everybody knows his age.
Sometimes age is a good thing. Hey, cut me some. Marcus, anything from the good of the order come on your side?
I just wanted to mention that while our economy still is tough and still is tight and there are still some storm clouds ahead, that tonight, city council authorized the value of 1. almost $1.6 million worth of abatements as it pertains to investment that local companies are having in our community, which I know is hard to sometimes translate into how that will impact everyone. But at least it shows that there's still local investment happening here in Cadillac and that our industry likes to be here and is continuing to invest in being here. And I think that's just a good just a great sign. Also, just wanted to mention for folks that are interested in some post Thanksgiving holiday events to visit the downtowncadillac.com website. That's for the Downtown Cadillac Association, where you'll find information on the Storybook Christmas event. So.
Anything new on the state level with regard to funding or anything of that nature?
There are some rumblings with respect to the personal property tax debate at the state level. We do not yet know exactly the direction it's going to take. I can say that the Michigan Municipal League is very engaged in this item. They have not yet moved from their position of neutrality. They were previously in a position of opposition. And then after various senate hearings, some of which I attended, they did move to a position of neutrality based upon what appeared to be somewhat of a compromising position that the state was going to move towards with respect to the personal property tax issue. But right now, there really isn't definitive information as far as where it's going yet. We believe that there'll be perhaps some new abilities for states to actually levy a special assessment, if you will, on frankly, on industrial businesses. If the property tax should go away from the state, if they should eliminate it, that would then allow the city to make up that difference by putting a special assessment in place. But again, very, very premature to really comment to say that that's what's going to happen because I really don't know at this point.
Okay. So anything else? I see your bears are on tonight.
Not checking this course. Taping it. So you can watch it at my leisure.
He's got a VCR. That's what that means.
DVR.
DVR.
Yeah, right.
A solid choice.
Just that, just to echo what other people have said, I don't want to repeat myself, but I wish everybody a happy and a safe Thanksgiving. And thank goodness the Bears are playing tonight.
Becoming a fan.
We still have a close session.
We do have a close session. Councilmember Stevens.
Just a couple of quick things. I want to thank councilmember Melama for he had another issues over coffee. And I know he's been doing that consistently, which is which is a nice thing that he's doing. It's a good offer from the city, let people come in and talk. And you know, it's exciting with the industrial. I will say one of the other parts of border review is we usually see when those IFTs go off of the tax exempt rule and and move over into the taxable part is they have to make the changes. And it is shocking how much of that is in our community. We maybe sometimes focus on the amount that we're forgiving and not realizing the portion that's here that possibly may not be if they chose another community. But I also think we should probably be proactive on this personal property. Not that the more the state has power over it, the probably the tougher it becomes for the city of Cadillac and many others. And happy Thanksgiving to all of you as well as the public. And we're a month countdown basically for Christmas.
All right. Thank you. I don't have too much other than happy Thanksgiving. Now we have an ethics ordinance. It's interesting. It's catching some wind in the state. The senate had just passed a school board resolution to bar school board members from voting on contracts if they have a close relative. And they're taking a real close look at it. That may have a big effect on our board here in our community and others. But I don't think any of us, if we're applied in the city's setting, have any relatives that work here, spouses or spouses, relatives. But that's that's going to be a big change if that does come down in our community.
Wasn't there just an award given to the budget thing again?
Yes, we should mention that.
I forgot to mention that. I was going to mention that. I forgot. So maybe you can do that.
I can. The GF, what is it? GFAO?
OA.
OA. There you go. GFOA, the grandfathers of something of a county.
I was going to say, what does that mean?
The grandfathers of a county.
They have issued a presentation on our city again. Would you like to maybe provide accurate commentary on it? Mr. Roberts?
Yes. For what I believe is the 28th or 29th consecutive year, we did get the government finance officers distinguished budget presentation award. So we've kind of kept that longstanding tradition alive once again this year. And and basically, that says anything that you want to know about the city from a budgetary perspective, we present it in the document well enough that you should be able to to find it, basically. So I think that's something we've all kind of counted as a feather in in our cap for a long time. And we did get it for another year. So always excited to to get that notification.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you and to your staff that you work with so hard.
Yep.
You got the good housekeeping seal of approval.
Good. Thanks for mentioning that. Yep. It's a good team. It's from from the council all the way down to to each department that has to submit their budgets and all the information.
Actually, it's a team effort.
Yep, sure is.
With a very good team leader.
Thank you.
Marcus? Yep.
Yeah.
Thanks for mentioning that.
You're welcome. Thank you, councilmembershippers, for bringing that up. So other than holiday wishes to everyone as well, that's going to do it for me. And Marcus, we have, as you mentioned, a close session. Do you like to discuss pending litigation?
We do. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the city attorney would like to provide an update in close session to the city council with respect to the current pending litigation with respect to the Blackburn lawsuit.
Okay.
So moved.
All right. Support. All right. We have a motion to move into closed session to discuss pending litigation. It has been supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. The first time. Enough already. Okay, we are back on a tube. And it looks like no one's remained in the council chambers other than our staff. I want to thank them and council for our meeting. Let's get back into our meeting, though, at this point, if we could have a motion to return to the open session.
I'd like to make a motion to return back into open session.
Support.
There's a motion and support. Chris, could we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Burnett?
Yes. Motion carried. Anything, Mr. Pecha, from your side or anyone else at this point?
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Again, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Hope you have a great weekend and Black Friday shop locally, please. And support our businesses if you can. With that magic words, meeting adjourned. Thank you.